Bienvenidos. Mi nombre es Virginia Souza. Soy miembro de la Liga de las Mujeres de Voto de la Comunidad Norte de Santa Barbara, la equipo de liderazgo. Actualmente, soy la encargada. La Liga Nacional de las Mujeres de Voto fue formada hace más de cien años cuando las mujeres estaban luchando por el derecho a votar. Mientras que somos extremadamente orgullosas de esa herencia, también somos progresistas en nuestro enfoque para nuestra educación y defensa de los no partidarios de los votantes. La Liga de las Mujeres de Voto acepta todos los géneros y etnias como miembros ahora. Y hemos removido barreras para los no ciudadanos también para convertirse en miembros. Estudiantes que tienen al menos 16 años de edad son miembros de nuestra Liga Local. Así que nuestra misión es no partidaria, y eso es crítico para nuestra misión. Lo que eso significa es que como organización no apoyamos a ningún candidato o apoyamos a ningún partido político. Antes de empezar esta noche, me gustaría agradecer a nuestros socios por este foro. Nuestro socio es la Cámara de Comercio de la Valle Santa María. Muchas gracias a la Cámara. También nos gustaría ofrecer un agradecimiento sincero a nuestros sponsors del foro: el fondo para Santa Barbara, Santa María Times y NAACP. Y finalmente, gracias a los candidatos por compartir sus vidas ocupadas con nosotros esta noche, y a ustedes, el público en vivo, por venir a entrevistar a los candidatos por un trabajo muy importante dentro de su ciudad. El interpretador de esta noche es José Paredes. Así que voy a pedir a los candidatos que hablen lentamente para hacer su trabajo más fácil. Aquí están las reglas y el formato de este foro. Comenzamos con un agradecimiento de origen. No veo una bandera. Habría hecho un saludo a la bandera si hubiera una. Pero dado que no veo... ¿Hay una aquí? Las pequeñas en la parte de atrás. Está bien. Oh, muy bien. Está bien, ¿puedes levantarla adelante? Y si todos se ponen, comenzaremos con un saludo a la bandera. Gracias. Firefighters para la rescate. Está bien, listo, comienza.
Le doy las gracias a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la República por la cual estamos, una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Muy bien. Y el agradecimiento de origen. La Liga de las Mujeres de Voto de la Comunidad Norte de Santa Barbara humblemente reconoce que estamos hablando con ustedes dentro de las tradicionales tierras de la tribu Xumash. reconocemos y estamos agradecidos por las primeras naciones que establecieron un ejemplo de cómo vivir en armonía con el mundo natural. Ahora, para algunos asuntos de casa, tendría que pedir al público que no aplauda más hasta el final del foro. Los candidatos no deben hablar ni de uno al otro, pero se dirigirán a responder a la audiencia. No habrá grabación de video autorizada. Y mañana o el día siguiente, cuando aparecerá el YouTube de este foro en el canal de YouTube de la Liga de las Mujeres de Voto de la Comunidad Norte de Santa Barbara y en nuestro sitio web y en el sitio web de Santa María Times, no se permitirá edición del video. Con eso dicho, vamos a conocer a los candidatos para este foro de la Distrito 1 y la Distrito 2. Y comenzaremos aquí al final con el señor Escobedo, Carlos Escobedo. Solo introduce a ti mismo, supongo.
Hola, mi nombre es María Salguero y estoy representando al Consejo de Ciudad de Santa María, Distrito 1.
Hola, todo el mundo. Mi nombre es Benjamin Ortiz y estoy representando al Consejo de Ciudad de Santa María, Distrito 2.
Hola, todo el mundo. Mi nombre es Gloria Flores y estoy representando al Consejo de Ciudad, Distrito 2.
Hola, mi nombre es Mike Cordero y estoy representando para ser reelecto para la posición del Consejo de Distrito 2 en Santa María.
Está bien, gracias. Para el formato de la noche, los candidatos han sido proporcionados dos preguntas por correo electrónico en advance. Éllos responderán estas preguntas primero. Cada pregunta tendrá un periodo de tiempo en el que responder. Sandy Boyd, si se puede sentar. Sandy es nuestro timer y tiene algunos patrones de tiempo. Con 1 minuto 30 segundos, 15 segundos y paro. Los candidatos responderán las preguntas en el orden determinado por una tarjeta de sorteo esta noche. Todos sacaron números realmente bajos, pero finalmente se determinó que Gloria Flores iba a responder la primera pregunta y ser la primera persona a responder. Después de que las dos primeras preguntas sean respondidas por todos los candidatos, tendrán una pausa de 10 minutos y ahí es cuando todas las preguntas serán reunidas del público. Así que asegúrense de que solo hay una pregunta por tarjeta de índice. Las preguntas serán entonces ordenadas por Lisa Thornhill, vicepresidente de la Liga, y ella está en la parte de atrás, y Molly de la Cámara de Comercio. Son dos ordenadores de preguntas. No queremos ninguna pregunta duplicada. Está bien, así que al final, después de que se haga, responderán esas preguntas del público hasta las 6:45 p.m. Y luego cerraremos con una declaración de final de dos minutos de cada uno. Ellos pueden clarificar un punto anterior o presentar algo nuevo, o simplemente resumir sus fortalezas clave. Así que estamos listos y listos. Es hora de empezar. Así que la primera pregunta sobre las calificaciones y las razones de estar representando y comenzaremos con Gloria.
Buenas noches. He vivido en Santa María durante ocho años. Mi antecedente es un director de escuela. También... Bueno, viví en San Diego, luego me mudé a Sacramento y acepté un trabajo como director. Y después de que mi plazo terminara allí, fui a trabajar para el oficio legislativo, la capital estatal. Y allí trabajé durante unos siete años trabajando en la política y trabajando con el legislativo. Y luego también empecé a trabajar en servicios sociales. Empecé a ser... También fui defensor de los veteranos. También fui designado por la Junta de Supervisors del condado para poder trabajar en una fuerza de tareas para la desesperación de los inútiles y para los niños de crianza en riesgo. Creo que mis habilidades que tengo me califican para el Distrito 2. También... Realmente creo en defender a los veteranos. También soy defensor de los veteranos. Y mi liderazgo también me ha enseñado cómo lidiar con el conflicto, la resolución, asegurando que los residentes en el distrito que vivo, especialmente el distrito en el que vivo, son oídos y representados.
Buenas noches y gracias por estar aquí. Mi nombre es Mike Cordero. He estado viviendo en Santa María desde 1972. Mi vida adulta fue en la policía, justo aquí en Santa María. Trabajé tres años en la policía, carpintería, luego vine aquí y trabajé 36 años aquí. Sabía que la policía era una posición para los jóvenes, así que decidí que iba a retirarme y me acercaron varias personas en la comunidad y me pidieron que representara al Consejo de Ciudad. Inicialmente, no tenía interés en hacer eso y pensé, bueno, ya sabes, pero tantas personas vinieron, personas de diferentes facciones. Así que decidí hacerlo y gané la elección de manera overwhelming y fue una gran experiencia. He disfrutado de esta posición mucho. Es genial trabajar en una comunidad y ser uno de los responsables de las decisiones que puedes realmente tener una influencia en la dirección en la que la ciudad va. Me conocí a mi esposa aquí. Nos casamos. Hemos estado casados durante 50 años. El próximo mes. Sí. Felicidades a ella. Hemos estado casados y tenemos tres niños adultos. Todos viven aquí en Santa María. Ahora acabamos de traer uno de regreso. Él acaba de mudarse hace un par de meses de Lincoln City, Oregon. Mi esposa está en el negocio de la enseñanza y está en la junta escolar de San Maria Benito y enseña a casi todos los adultos. Es interesante escuchar algunas de las calificaciones que escucho aquí de Gloria. Y supongo que en cierto modo pasamos por el mismo entrenamiento, la resolución del conflicto y la policía funcionan muy bien. Y disfrutamos de los desafíos en Santa María. Y espero continuar como su representante en la segunda distrito y aprecio su apoyo. Muchas gracias.
Pasaremos a los aplausos hasta el final. Carlos, te diré a ti siguiente.
Gracias. Primero, les doy las gracias a la Liga de las Mujeres de Voto de la Comunidad Norte de Santa Barbara, a los miembros de la Liga, a Santa Barbara, a la Santa María Times y a NAACP por su invitación. Mi nombre es Carlos Escobedo. Soy el producto de la Roca y la Barra. Nací y nació en un pequeño pueblo en San Antonio, que voy de vuelta a México, un pequeño pueblo, y fui a Santa María en 2016 y seguí en la Roca y la Barra. Mi familia vive en Santa María desde los 40, y desde entonces, todo empezó a migrar. Mi primer trabajo aquí fue en la corporación, trabajando en las comunidades, en la corporación de campi, justicia. Y soy un productor porque era de Santa María. Y después de eso, empecé a trabajar por la salida, por la gas站, por el truco, por el chile en ese año. Luego, me dedicé a la política de salud, ayudando a los miembros de la comunidad a tener acceso a educación superior. Actualmente, trabajo con la Comunidad Santa Barbara, ayudando a la población, los ancianos y ancianos de la ciudad a ser exitosos y ser exitosos. Y parte de mi familia terminó siendo representante fue el hecho de que amo Santa María. Vengo de otro país sin solo un solo barco. Ha sido increíble ser amado de la forma que Santa María lo ha hecho. Y eso ha sido mi forma de hacer mi trabajo en Santa María, todo el trabajo con los no partidos, todo lo que había estado haciendo antes, ahora que se canceló, porque eso es la expectativa de Santa María, alguien que se showa, que se pone de pie y que da lo mejor de su comunidad. Y cuando estaba en México, tuve una gran conversación y tuve una gran gran, obviamente sí. Él dijo, yo creía que iba a ser miembro de los Estados Unidos y él dijo, ¿tienes que hacer eso? Vas a trabajar tu asa, porque tengo la ansiedad. Y eso, lo siento por eso, no me gusta. Y encima de eso, él recibió el impacto de esta comunidad. Y eso es lo que ha sido mi motivación para representar al Distrito 1. Soy el único miembro del consejo y el candidato que ha estado por toda su historia, desde el río hasta el sol. Todos tienen que tener, este es, yo tengo una experiencia de repercutencia, pero quiero que se dé a la mesa, la verdadera Santa María. Mi agenda no es, ya sabes, que ustedes deben estar allí y decirles lo que tienen, lo que es, o lo que es, o lo que es. Y eso es mi trabajo durante estos cuatro años y espero tener la confianza y representar al pueblo del distrito, el mejor distrito en la ciudad, en Santa María.
Hola. Hola, todo el mundo. Así que, de nuevo, soy María Salguero. En realidad, crecí en el Distrito 1, así que asistí a las escuelas locales aquí y viví en el distrito. Fui parte de la primera clase de graduación de la Pioneera Valley High School. Eso fue allí durante los cuatro años, así que somos la clase original de 2008. Después de la escuela secundaria, me mudé a Santa Cruz para asistir a la universidad. Tenía 17 años y no tenía idea de lo que quería hacer, pero sabía que quería hacer algo, ¿verdad? En 2012, gradué con honras, con dos doctorados de doctorado. Y me mudé al sur para trabajar para una empresa de derecho de inmigración. Realizé muy rápidamente que quería ser abogado también, así que volví al distrito y estudié para el ELSAT y luego dejé el estado y fui a la escuela de derecho. He estado de regreso en la área desde 2019, en el distrito en particular. He estado viviendo en el distrito. Se siente toda mi vida. Actualmente, estoy criando a mi hijo de tres años junto con mi esposo en el distrito, así que esto es literalmente mi hogar. Durante casi una década, he estado representando a miembros de nuestra comunidad, miembros vulnerables de nuestra comunidad, como abogado no lucro. Así que eso significa que puedo representar a la gente libre de cargo. Y a lo largo de esa experiencia, he sido capaz de ver muchos, muchos factores y muchos, muchos problemas que se expanden después de un caso legal. Y, ya sabes, también, muy similar al señor Cordero, no tenía intención de representar a la oficina pública, pero creo que una vez que estás en este trabajo de defender a la comunidad, para mí, esto se convirtió en una especie de progresión natural. Y, ya sabes, buscar representar al Consejo de Ciudad para mí es una extensión del trabajo que he estado haciendo durante casi diez años, que es representar a miembros de nuestra comunidad y impulsar la política que en realidad cambia la vida. Así que estoy muy emocionada de estar aquí. Quiero agradecer a todos ustedes por tomarse la noche para escucharnos hablar y compartir un poco sobre por qué estamos representando y gracias.
Hola, todo el mundo. De nuevo, mi nombre es Benjamin Ortiz y estoy representando al Distrito 2. Nací y nací aquí en Santa María. El distrito que estoy representando es en realidad el mismo distrito en el que crecí, así que tengo una conexión personal con este distrito y con esta comunidad. Quería comenzar compartiendo dos sets de habilidades y experiencias que traería al Consejo de Ciudad que me haría un miembro eficiente. El primero es relacionado con mi educación. Después de haber graduado de la Pioneera Valley, clase de 2010, fui a UC Berkeley donde estudié planificación de ciudad. La planificación de ciudad es un conjunto importante de habilidades que actualmente no se representa en el Consejo de Ciudad y es algo que únicomente traería a la mesa. También, en mi opinión, es muy necesario para un consejo de ciudad efectivo. Debido a esta educación, entiendo cómo nuestro entorno físico, la ciudad que construimos, afecta nuestro día a día social y económico. Como miembro del consejo, guiaré Santa María a un futuro mejor para nuestros vecinos, para nuestra comunidad y para nuestra economía. La segunda experiencia y seta de habilidades que me gustaría compartir es relacionada con mi carrera. Durante la última década, he trabajado como ingeniero de software. Es una carrera que comencé enseñándome a mí mismo en un programa. Trabajé en la hora del reloj y en las horas posteriores para aprender las habilidades necesarias para ser exitoso en esta carrera y ha pagado. También muestra que soy capaz de aprender habilidades nuevas y complejas rápidamente. Además, hoy en día trabajo en una equipo en mi carrera. Y como todos saben, las equipos no siempre están de acuerdo en todo. Así que tengo práctica regular y tengo habilidades que me hacen un colaborador efectivo y efectivo en hacer cosas en un grupo. Como miembro del consejo, colaboraré con la Cámara de Ciudad y con otros miembros del consejo para guiar a la ciudad a un futuro mejor. Juntos usaré estas habilidades y experiencias para luchar y priorizar a los residentes de Santa María.
Muchas gracias por la pregunta número uno. Pregunta número dos. Te daremos un poco más de tiempo si necesitas responder esta pregunta porque es una pregunta de dos partes. Discúlpame los dos principales o dos desafíos que ves enfrentando en tu distrito ahora mismo y en los próximos cuatro a ocho años y cómo usará su rol en el Consejo de Ciudad para ayudar a abordar estos problemas. Y esta vez comenzaremos con el señor Cordero.
Muchas gracias. Algunas de las cosas más importantes que están ocurriendo en el Consejo de Ciudad ahora mismo no necesariamente en orden de importancia que podríamos considerar como el Consejo de Ciudad, pero son los temas más hotos que están en la mesa en este momento. Me gustaría resolver el problema y lo que sea que se necesite hacerlo y tal cual sea que salga con nuestros grupos de trabajo. Tenemos tres grupos de trabajo. Tenemos uno que está resuelto y el departamento de la policía está actualmente irresuelto y, por supuesto, el departamento de la policía está actualmente resuelto. Empecemos con ellos. Aunque hay otras cosas, muchas personas dirían, bueno, esto es más importante o eso es más importante, pero ciertamente es un problema que necesita ser resuelto. La otra cosa que parece impactar nuestra mesa es el problema de los inútiles. El problema de los inútiles es horrendo y eso no es único para Santa María. Quiero decir, es nacional. ¿Y cómo resolvemos eso? Y la forma de resolverlo es en esta área es que tenemos, muchos de los no lucros están involucrados, Comunify está involucrado, United Way está involucrado, hay un montón de diferentes no lucros que están involucrados en este proceso. La metodología actual es que están tratando de conseguir a estas personas rodeadas por sus recursos, los llamamos rodeos, y darles opciones que puedan trabajar, darles empleos, darles educación, darles casas, darles algún lugar fuera de las calles. Y eso es lo que hemos estado tratando de hacer ahora. Puedo decirte que United Way ha sido responsable de más de cien posiciones de personas inútiles en la vivienda permanente. Y eso puede no parecer ser un número grande, pero es un número grande para aquellos de nosotros que estamos en el negocio de tratar de sacar a la gente de las calles. Es muy difícil de lidiar con. Algunas personas no responden. Tienen un estilo de vida diferente que no se conecta con el estilo de vida de otras personas, tal vez algunos de ustedes en esta habitación, pero son seres humanos y merecen ciertas consideraciones que necesitamos tratar de ayudarles a darles y sacarles de las calles y en la vivienda permanente. Espero que podamos resolver esas cosas de una manera equitativa que no impacte demasiado en los presupuestos de Santa María. Y eso sería todo.
Todo el mundo, este es el flyer. Así que como mencioné al principio de mi invitación, mi agenda ha sido creada desde la comunidad, porque eso es lo que representamos, no Carlos, representamos a la comunidad. Y eso es algo que siempre debemos mantener en mente, que no es sobre usted, es sobre todos. Y en los últimos meses, en realidad, últimos años, llamando a las puertas, teniendo esas conversaciones, han habido algunas de las principales cuestiones que han sido identificadas. Uno, publicidad. La gente de este distrito quiere más policías en la calle. Y durante estos últimos cuatro años he sido capaz de aumentar y han sido apoyados el aumento de los policías en la calle. Entonces, me gustaría ir un poco más afuera y informarte. Hemos estado celebrando reuniones de la comunidad. A lo largo del distrito, cuando hay un problema, cuando alguien dice, hay mucho que está sucediendo en el vecindario, somos parte de la comunidad, podemos traer al jefe de la policía, el departamento de la policía, todas estas agencias, para tener una conversación, un partido de la comunidad, porque al final del día, eso es lo que crea la confianza y trabajamos juntos. Y otra cuestión que se mencionó, los inútiles. En particular para el Distrito 1, que está ubicado en el lado norte de Santa María, en la ribera de Livi, y el único miembro del consejo que ha sido, ya sabes, excusar de lado, de restricción, siempre es una de las razones por las que tenemos todos estos aumentos de la desesperación en la ribera de Livi en particular, es porque es más la cuestión de la desesperación. Y no me gusta incluso la excusa de, oh, es de restricción, simplemente en otro lugar. He estado atendiendo con los supervisores de la ciudad de Santa Barbara y los supervisores de la ciudad de San Luis Obispo, trabajando para obtener, porque como se mencionó por el distrito por delante antes, es una agencia gubernamental, no lucro, tenemos que trabajar juntos porque no podemos hacerlo por nosotros. Distrito 1, quiero decir, podemos hacer mucho. La ciudad de Santa María puede hacer mucho, pero si colaboras con los counties y pones de lado todas esas excusas, si nos llamamos las puertas y empezamos a salir y reunir todos los recursos, eso es lo que hacemos como representante, ponemos a la gente primero, ponemos a las cuestiones primero, porque el desempleo no es un problema demócrata, republicano, independiente, cualquier partido, es un problema de Santa María. Y eso es lo que he estado trabajando. Y la otra cuestión en el lado es la vivienda. La vivienda ha estado atendiendo para el tipo de vivienda correcto en Santa María. Hemos estado teniendo todos estos desarrollos que solo traen rentas altas, tasas que no son accesibles para los santamarcanos. Así que necesitamos invertir y apoyar todos estos proyectos que pueden traer calidad de vivienda a Santa María. Y esto no es solo para ustedes, esto es Santa María, residentes del Distrito 1, juntando sus voces en una persona que, como mencioné antes, ha estado mirando sus puertas, puerta por puerta, porque eso es lo que representamos. Nos preocupamos por la comunidad, apoyamos a la comunidad y la comunidad nos apoya.
Está bien. Así que para mí, uno de los mayores problemas, como Carlos mencionó, en nuestro distrito es la desesperación. Así que el Distrito 1 frontera con el río y como muchos de ustedes han visto cuando se va a Santa María, saben que van hacia el sur, está lleno de personas que están viviendo en condiciones inhumanas y eso no es aceptable. Actualmente, la ciudad de Santa María no tiene plan, no tiene presupuesto, no tiene intención de hacer nada sobre la desesperación. Y entiendo el valor de los no lucros. Yo mismo soy presidente de un no lucro local que trata la desesperación en nuestra comunidad, pero esa no es la solución. Necesitan más y tenemos que ser responsables. Y como consejo de la ciudad, seré responsable. En realidad haré algo. No es solo acerca de salir al río y entregar agua. Eso no es por qué la gente eligió a usted. La gente eligió a usted para hacer trabajo de política, para hacer cosas, para mover a la gente del río y llevarlos a vivienda permanente. Y eso va a requerir muchos actores diferentes, como cualquier otro, ¿verdad? Pero requiere más que eso, una estrategia y requiere que alguien diga, en algún momento alguien tiene que dejar de llorar la ciudad de Santa Barbara o la ciudad de Slow o Caltrans o estos propietarios privados y simplemente decir, necesitamos hacer algo sobre ello. Estos gente están viviendo, ya sabes, está lloviendo, está frío, si lo sentimos dentro de nuestras casas calientes, imagina lo que están sintiendo fuera en el suelo, ¿verdad? Vas, ya sabes, crecí, como dije, crecí en el Distrito 1, así que crecí caminando en el río con mi mamá, que está en el público. Tengo un hijo de tres años y no siento seguro de hacer eso ahora. Y también he estado llamando a las puertas y específicamente las personas que viven por el río tienen quejado en gran medida de cómo la gente está entrando en sus casas, que están robando sus bicis, están rompiendo sus bolas, como están usando umbrella y haciendo esto y eso. Y les digo, la ciudad no tiene plan y podemos hacer más. Y no tenemos que reinventar la rueda. La ciudad de Galita actualmente tiene un plan en juego y espero mirar otros modelos que otras ciudades han implementado para tomar responsabilidad y tener una fuerza de desesperación de la desesperación dentro de la ciudad de Santa María que realmente toma responsabilidad y dice, cómo organizamos todos estos diferentes actores que ya están tratando de la desesperación en nuestra ciudad y realmente impulsar cambios significativos hacia adelante. No es solo acerca de sacar a la gente del río. Es acerca de asegurar que estas personas tienen un trabajo, asegurarse de que si tienen abuso de sustancia, que si tienen problemas de salud mental, que todas esas cosas se resuelvan. Así que es, y creo que es por eso que la ciudad no ha estado involucrada, algo que el consejo no ha estado involucrado porque es complejo y es trabajo duro, pero estoy lista para hacerlo.
Así que como he estado fuera del distrito llamando a las puertas, he escuchado dos highlights que he oído de la gente que son desafíos actuales que querrían ver abordados. El primero, sin sorprender, es cuán inaccesible se ha vuelto Santa María. Para muchos de nosotros, ese housing se ha vuelto cada vez más inaccesible. For many of us, that, that housing has become more and more unattainable, more and more unaffordable. Many of us are living multiple families to a home due to rising costs and, and more. So for renters, I believe that the city needs leadership that will act to stabilize rents today. Our first priority must be to keep people in their homes. That is the bottom line. The current unregulated housing market that we all live in is causing this homelessness crisis. It's causing hunger, it's causing housing insecurity. And as your future council member, I will protect you from this unregulated housing market. For homeowners, we need leadership that will act to bring truly affordable options to Santa Maria. We need housing options for students, we need housing options for families that are just starting out, we need housing options for the elderly and more. And we need options that allow for a gentle and planned orderly growth to our city instead of the haphazard ADU implementation that we've had. And we need an approach that allows for building generational wealth for our residents. As your council member, one of the things I will prioritize is working with nonprofit housing developers who focus on, who focus on making housing affordable for this, for this community specifically. I will work to bring a variety of housing options to Santa Maria and I will work for the thoughtful growth of our city. The second thing that I hear from residents is concern about the ongoing budget crisis and its impact on the services and programs that we all rely on and love to take advantage of. We seem to find ourselves in this crisis year after year and that's because the city is not working to address the root of the problem. The root of the problem is that for the past 75 years, the way that we've built the city fundamentally cannot pay for itself. And that's why we always find ourselves in this budget deficit. So the council has not challenged the root of the problem. Instead, they've chosen to cut programs and services. Because of my education in city planning, I understand how these problems are interrelated and I will work to address the root of the problem. So Santa Maria can consistently pay its bills, expand programs and services and create more opportunities for community members.
Pity me. So for me, my, what I see in Santa Maria, oh, it's not. Hello, hello? Yep, okay. All right. So I see so many things, just being here in Santa Maria, some of the needs of our community. And for me, affordable housing is a big issue because I see that Santa Maria is experiencing rapid growth. And we have a, affordable housing is a persistent issue here and especially in District Two because we have low-income families. We want them to stay in District Two. I don't want them to move. If I, if I'm elected, I'm going to push for policies, I'm going to push to see that we can help them, first-time buyers, why can't we help them buy a house? We need to be able to help them to stay here in the city of Santa Maria. I would advocate for policies and encourage affordable housing development programs that, that will assist our people here in Santa Maria in District Two. Another challenge that I see is homelessness. It's a public safety. I see that there's a lack of resources. We need a wraparound program for our homelessness. It's not just moving them from one area to another area, it's about getting them and finding the solution for them. It's a wraparound solution that we need. We have homelessness that deal with mental health. I have veterans that are out there. We need to do something about the homeless situations. We need to be effective when we go out there, not just say, look at it and have a closed eye. We have sore eyes in our city and we need to be able to do something about that. As city council, we can make a difference. We can push for things to be changed. We can make a difference with the homeless, not just looking at them as inhuman beings, but looking at people, people, they are people that still need help. And we as a city of Santa Maria, we need to look for that help, we need to find resources, we need to bring all the nonprofits. If I'm elected, I'll bring all the nonprofits in, I'll find every church in this city, every clergy, I'll drag them in and we will partner with them and we will find a solution for the homelessness here in Santa Maria. Thank you. She didn't put the sign up.
Okay. And with that, we will, we will announce we're having a 10-minute intermission. So it's time for you to write your questions. I'm sure this dialogue has brought some questions to mind. If you didn't have some when you already arrived, people that have the attempt, who needs to have index cards? If you need an index card, raise your hand and someone will bring you index cards to write your questions. One question per card and Molly and Lisa will sort those. So we have about 10 minutes for that. And grab some refreshments or some water in the back. Okay, we're ready to start. Please, please be quiet and take your seats. We're running overtime. Take your seats, please, and be quiet. Children. Yeah, where's Chris? Where's Christopher? Okay, all right. Back under control, very good. Okay, lots of great questions and thank you Molly and Lisa for sorting these all out. All right, let's see, where are we in terms of who starts? This time Carlos will begin. We're going to ask, we're going to give two minutes for each one of these questions. All right, timer's ready and candidate's ready. Carlos, you'll be the first and this is our first question. In both districts, roads, road repair, speeding traffic, red light running are issues. What is your plan to improve these street issues?
Hello. There you go. Did you say the street improvement and the red, those two items? Or just speeding? Basically it's two, two items, the street repairs, okay. Great question. I think it's a, one of the things I'm really proud of since I got in the council was that since we, since my, the time I wrote for a budget, we increased double the street maintenance. Yeah, of course, you know, it's easy to say that they're destroyed. I mean, we just invested last year, $2 million repairing Gloucester. We increased a railroad, two of the main streets that are used by the Santa Marians, all of us. And there's more to do, of course, but there's a lot of challenges that comes along with that. One is that money is never, never, is never enough just to get a sense of, we need at least 10 times that amount to keep it as it is. So one of the other challenges that we have is that vehicle electrification. So every time you pump gas, you pay a tax to the state and that tax comes back to the city and help us to pay for road maintenance. With these new electric vehicles coming up, we're reducing the amount of revenue out of that. And those vehicles are using the streets and they're heavier than a regular vehicle. So we receive less revenue. Now there, the state, there's, there's a conversation about working how we can, you know, balance that. Caltrans has a huge challenge as well in maintenance. In terms of the people not respecting the lights, it's education. I mean, definitely one of the things that I've been advocating a lot for is to have more patrolling, more police officers and is, so it's more likely to, to catch these people. Because if there's no consequences, people will keep doing it. And unfortunately, as we can, we have seen, there's people that has been taking the life of others because there is reckless and irresponsible driving. So, thank you and yeah.
So I think though, when it comes to road repairs and even speeding tickets and what was it, running red lights, all of that has to do with the budget, right? It's how do we have the money to fix our roads and how do we fund the departments that keep things in order? And in order to do that, we have to look at the city budget and the city has consistently been in a deficit for what, over 10 years, 10, 15 years? And it's because the, the city council has made decisions without much foresight. And I'll give you an example, during COVID-19, the city took a grant and hired a whole bunch of staff. When that grant money was done, the staff is still here. So now the city has to figure out how to pay the staff and that money that could have perhaps gone to fixing our roads now has to go to supplying, you know, the income of the staff members. So as city council member, I will have the foresight to think ahead and not just in the immediate needs, but in the long-term needs that the city has. And our roads, maintaining and keeping the order is definitely one of the things that you have to think about when you're making a decision today. You know, I want the decisions that I make today for my son to reap those benefits when he's older. And I think that all of you would like the same thing as well. So that's my opinion.
All right, yeah, so this is a good question. The, there's, there's two aspects I see too. I think we've talked a little bit, or I've talked a little bit about the foundational budget problems that the city has. And I just want to explicitly say that relates to the condition of our roads. So by addressing the foundational issues with our budget, our roads will improve. The other thing I wanted to say was around speeding and traffic and all of that stuff. With my background in city planning, this is something that I'm well-versed in. Many approaches to these issues involve adding, you know, new, new lights, new flashing lights to get you to notice the, the speed limit. But these are all solutions that don't work, as we all know. Solutions to traffic and speeding need to change the shape of our roads to make it safe by default, to make the speed limits enforced by default. You don't need somebody there watching you to keep you in line. The road is designed to keep you at a safe speed limit. And so with, with me on city council, you would have somebody who is aware that there are other options than just a flashing light and would be advocating for safer, safer infrastructure.
Hello? So for myself, I see it off of Donovan, the roads, the traffic. I see people speeding down Donovan, speeding down the street that I live on, Vicky Avenue, just racing down there and speed bumps aren't going to change it. You can put all the speed bumps you want, you can put all the signs up that stop, people aren't listening. We have to do something different. Our streets need repairing. The streets in our city need to be fixed and we need to stop saying we're going to fix them. We need to look at the budget, we need to prepare for that. As city council, I would make sure our streets are fixed. I remember we went to a meeting for, for all of us that were running for our districts and they gave us a number. And I remember the gentleman, he said, here's my number. And I said, so I could call you if a street light is out, if something's wrong on the road? I would bug him, I would show up in his office and tell him, this is the road that needs to be fixed, these are the streets that we need to slow them down and we need to stop acting like it's just, it's, it's not going to hap, it's not going to happen unless we have somebody that's proactive in there, doing what they're supposed to do as city council and making sure that the job gets done.
Thank you very much. Let's talk about the roadways first. The roadways, for those of you who may not know, just the roads in Santa Maria to rebuild it would be about $1 billion. That's the investment that we have. So we take it very seriously. We've hired some people to come in and help us to analyze the roads and see which part of the roadways need to be done first. And then there's a group of people that do assess that. And so it may not, it may not fix the one that you want fixed or that I want fixed right away. They take them on a priority basis and there's a four or five different terms. There's a pot, the pothole, we're all familiar with it, just a big hole. Then there's something called alligatorine and there's several different things that happen. There's some very smart people that do this stuff all the time and they decide as a rule which ones we're going to fix first and which ones are, are most in need and dangerous. Traffic enforcement, having done that for a number of years, most people only do those things when they take a look around and the cops aren't there. So they're probably going to continue to do that stuff if that happens to be their kind of, their kind of activity. So you're not going to stop that. You know, that's going to happen because you got people that are just going to do it because they can. Good, strong enforcement, enforcement doesn't necessarily mean writing a ticket. Enforcement means just that, to enforce it, stop somebody, talk to them, maybe you don't want to write them a ticket, maybe you do. But enforcement is what it is. And the best thing for that is education, folks. All the enforcement in the world isn't going to cover over education. Educating these kids in our schools and the newspapers, in your homes, education will change that result.
Okay, the timer's having problems with the, with the timing device. We need help from the audience here. Okay, got it? Okay, got it. All right, next question. The city and county often seem to be in conflict over issues like land use or funding. What can the city council do to build a more effective relationship with the county? And we'll start with Maria.
So there's always going to be different interests at play. So I'm a federal litigator, I go up against the US government attorney, right, on a daily basis. And there's always so many interests on the line, on both sides. When you are dealing with the county, you are dealing with ordinances that are different than city ordinances, you're dealing with different laws, you're also going to deal with the state, you're also going to deal with the federal government. I think that the way that the city is able to push forward the priorities that the community has voice or the priorities that the council has set is by being creative and being strategic. You will always have conflicting interests at play, like I've mentioned. As city council member, I will bring the skills that I have to find these meeting grounds, these meeting points of resolution, of pushing things forward. When it comes to the county, the county has a lot, you know, their, their resources are a lot different than the resources in the city. And as a city, we have to be creative even in our relationships with the county and with the state and always looking out to see if there are any grants or any other benefit that we can bring to the city. So it shouldn't be seen as sort of with animosity as even if your conflicts are directly, you know, in conflict, if your interests are directly in conflict, it should always be with the intention of removing a it should always be with the intention of removing emotion, removing, you know, your personal opinions about it and seeing where is the meeting ground? How can I objectively come to a conclusion and to a resolution?
Thank you. So when it comes to working with the county, I will work with the county as an ally, as an amplifier. Their reach is far greater than that of the city alone. One specific example I want to touch on is when it relates to homelessness. The county has more resources at the current moment to help us address homelessness. And so far, the city has not taken advantage of those resources and has not been an active partner in addressing homelessness with the county. So that is one specific example of how I would work with the county in terms of, yeah, that's how I'd work with the county.
So the county and the city, or the city of Santa Maria, needs to work together in order to accomplish what we need to accomplish here. If we're at odds, nothing is ever going to get done. We're going to be still waiting for things to get accomplished. I believe as city council, we should be able to be on the same page, the same team, working together, striving together, even though we have differences. We need to put all of that aside because our main objective is the city of Santa Maria, not ourselves. It's not ourselves, it's the city of Santa Maria. And the county does have a lot of resources, as Ben was saying. And we need to utilize those resources for our city to deal with the issues of homelessness. So as a city council, I would strive to work together with the county and let them know, "We're partnering with you. We believe that you're a great asset for us, we're a great asset for you. And we work together to solve the solutions, not to just think it's going to go away." And so that's how I would deal with it.
Thank you. The county and the city definitely have some different opinions. And the city and the county do work together, they do do things. They mutually accommodate each other. But when I make decisions on the city council, I look at it and have to think, what is best for the citizens in Santa Maria? For the people that put me in this chair? That is where I look. I don't look to what is, to help somebody else as much as I do to help the citizens of Santa Maria, the community of Santa Maria. We need to work together, but we also have to consider that this is what these people want. This is what my constituents want, and I work toward that a lot. And I have projects that are going on right now, today, that are of that nature. And we have to do things that will benefit the community financially. The city doesn't make money as a rule. They do in some enterprise funds, but we get money through development fees and things of this nature. And those things pay not only the city stuff, but they pay school taxes and things of that type. So it's much more complex than just saying, "We need to do this together. We need to work with the county." It is difficult because they have the same interest. You have to sympathize with them. They have the exact same interest of wanting things in their jurisdiction. We have a lot of ties with the county. We have, with the county is one of our customers, several of our customers. We've got 30 or 40 different organizations, ties with them that we do on a regular basis. So there is collaboration.
Thank you. So I can tell you what I have been, and how I have been collaborating already with the county. It's a, yeah, there's a lot of challenges because there's two different jurisdictions that have a different agenda. And, but I think that the most important part of how to build that is relationship-based. It's approaching to all of the county supervisors, talk with them, get to know them. Because as I mentioned, it's not about your personal, it's about how you can navigate the system to pull resources. And I have done that not just with the county, with the state, if it's needed with the federal government, you know. We cannot just, we need to put aside our political or personal opinions and be focusing on, as I mentioned before, on how to pull resources for Santa Maria. And there's two great examples. One, the sport complex. Has been talked about for years, years, maybe decades, about the need for a sport complex in Santa Maria. I've been championing to bring $1.5 million in funding from the county of San Barbara to make that a reality. We already purchased the land, and it's going to come to Santa Maria. And it's going to be located in the west side of Santa Maria. So it's not about, it's about how you can create this connection so you can bring resources for Santa Marians. And the second one is homelessness. As I mentioned before, the only council member that has personally been reaching out to the San Luis Obispo county supervisors, to the San Barbara county supervisors, I've been on the side, talking with people because that's who they are, and it was mentioned before, is people with feelings, people that need help. So that's how you make things happen, is when you collaborate. Because there's a great saying that says, "If you want to go fast, go by yourself. If you're going to go farther, you are together." Thank you.
Thank you. We have, it looks like we have three more questions, and we might, we're going to go over a little bit, so I don't know that we'll get to all of these. This question is, "How will you facilitate affordable rent/housing?" And Ben Ortiz is the first candidate. "How will you facilitate affordable rent/housing?"
All right. So I think the first, you know, thing I've already talked about is the need to implement rent stabilization. This is extremely important because it is the thing that keeps people in their homes and out of houselessness. That would be my first priority when it comes to affordable rent and housing. I think it's, I also want to add to that, that affordable, affordable, actually, I'll move on from that. So for affordable housing, as I've mentioned, there needs to be many, many approaches to make this happen. One is collaborating with nonprofit developers. When you have a development that is, that does not need to turn a profit, you have more affordable housing. When you have housing that is more suited to different life stages, you know, students, elderly, just starting a family, living on your own, whatever it is, when you have housing that's made for you, it's much more affordable than having to pay a, pay for sort of the average three-bedroom home in any situation. So I would be working towards, you know, changing our, everybody's, every city planner's favorite word, changing our zoning in order to, you know, facilitate more affordable housing.
So I would advocate for policies that encourage affordable housing development. I would also work with nonprofits, and I would seek state and federal grants that would help us with affordable housing. Because we don't want the people of Santa Maria to move out, we want them to stay here. But they can't if the rent is constantly moving and changing over time. So for me, as, if elected as city council, that's an issue for me right there, affordable housing. To be able to encourage the families and for them to know, "We're going to help them to be able to stay here in Santa Maria. We're going to deal with the issues of affordable housing." And so for me, it's collaborating with many, many pieces to be able to make sure that this happens for affordable housing.
Thank you for the question. This is a very touchy subject for some people in the community. Affordable housing is important. However, I don't believe that the government should be telling people how much they should be charging for rent. That's something that should be set by the economy itself, by the market. And that, if you start doing that, who, somebody's going to pay for it. That is not going to just happen and go away. If the cost to run this place is $1,000, then there has to be $1,000 at the end of the month, whether you're paying it, or whether the state's paying it, or whether the county's paying it, or the city. Somebody has to pay that $1,000 so that the person, the property owner, can continue to profit, to make their business, to keep their property up. So I don't believe that the government should be involved in your life when you don't need them. The market will set itself. The market will have a way of handling that because there is no profit in it if someone has a number of houses and nobody's staying in them because you're charging too much money. You're not going to make anything. So 100% of nothing is nothing. So there's an incentive to keep it at a certain level. What that is, is set by the market. Don't let yourself be fooled. There is eons of information that market-setting rent control has caused serious decay in the part of many communities. You can read that on Google, I don't have to tell you about it, it's there for you. And that's it for the market, for the rent control.
What's actually affordable? That's a good question that everybody has, like, you know, everybody's trying to figure out what's affordable housing. And during the last couple of years, I have been the only council member that has officially, an openly opposed, given incentive to out-of-the-town developers. It's a, and that's developments that just bring market rate, high rent, that do not help our community to improve, to fulfill the American dream of owning maybe a small apartment, then maybe another bigger houses, and so on and so forth. And it's not been, I've been the only soul, and the sole voice in the council that has been opposing that, and because there's different ways to reach to affordability. And one is to get the right kind of housing in Santa Maria. We cannot afford to give money away for taxpayers' money. So big developers can't build the house that basically a good chunk of Santa Maria cannot afford. So that's one way to really address the issue of affordability in Santa Maria. Thank you.
So I want to start off by saying that I'm the only candidate running for Santa Maria City Council District 1 that is fundraising money that is not supported by PACs that preserve landlord and developer interests. So when we talk about pushing for community-based affordable housing, we have to really think about who is backing our campaigns and what is our motivation, right? We talk about the Vernon Group as being a bad, you know, example of subsidies and giving away city money, and yes. But the council missed an opportunity to, one, be creative and to negotiate a good deal with developers because they are for-profit developers that are going to be profiting tremendously from city resources. So why didn't the city ask for more? As city council member, I won't wait to the very last minute when voting is happy to bring up these issues. I will be strategic, I will push forward these negotiations from the start. Because when you already have community input that is telling you, "We need affordable housing, there is not enough affordable housing," that should already be an issue that is in the forefront of your mind in these negotiations. And the city can do better. We should not be handing away, you know, taxpayer money to for-profit developers, but we also have to be strategic because we need affordable housing. So how do you blend those two issues and come to an agreement?
Thank you. Next to the last question, and we'll start with Gloria this time. We're back to Gloria. This is a good one. "How will you address the gang activity in your district?"
I've worked with our, when I was in Sacramento, I worked with the Gang Task Force. I was able to address some of the issues that were there. And I see here, being here eight years, I see the need for youth that are at risk. We have to be able to come up with a solution for our young people so that they're not enticed to join gangs that are already out there. There's enough gangs here in the city of Santa Maria, although some people say there's not. Yes, there is. And we need to come up with a policy and a plan to be able to address these gang members and to let them know that Santa Maria is not going to tolerate them bringing fear into other people's lives. They're going after our young people, they're showing up at schools, they're encouraging them to join a gang. And so for me, it's all about setting up a task force that would be able to go into the schools, to set up clubs in the schools, to help the young people in school to find other resources. Having soccer is great, but we need other outlets for our young people today so that they don't feel like gangs are the solution for them, that that's their new home. We need to go after them and let them know. And that's going to take a whole community, law enforcement, everyone, to join together to let them know Santa Maria has zero tolerance for gangs in our city.
Thank you. Well, I've heard this a couple of times tonight. I am the only candidate that has ever run a gang unit for the police department. And it's not as simple as going out and making arrests. If you really want to change some lives, someone spoke to me here tonight about how decent it was when I was doing that job. So how do you educate people? I mentioned education earlier. You can't just do it with arrests, that's not going to happen. I have, ladies and gentlemen, I have been to more homicide scenes than any one man should ever have to go to, and they were all young kids. They were all so young, so tender. And I, it brings tears to my eyes to think about it. It's education and the providing of other activities. You can't do the old adage about you take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. Well, we can't make everything happen. But if we have these things available to these young people, we're going to make an impact. And there's no doubt about that. I have seen many people come out of the gang culture. I will share with you that I came out of the gang culture. So it can happen. And we didn't call it a gang in Santa Barbara, we called it a club. All of my education today tells me it was not a club. And we never did things like they did now. There's no shootings or anything like that, it was totally different than that. But the whole thing is making things available to these young people that is outside of the gang culture and make it rewarding for them. And you will change lives. Thank you very much.
As you guys already had figured out by my accent, I'm not from this area. I'm a little bit souder, in a beautiful town called San Martín, as I mentioned before. And then I moved, my family and I, we moved to a big city called Guadalajara. And unfortunately, one of the reasons why we ended up moving here to Santa Maria is because of the gang and cartels. because of the gang and cartels. And it is sad. I've seen it firsthand, some of my former classmates disappearing, not getting through the, you know, falling through the cracks. And it breaks your heart. But also have seen what happened when you support a young children, child in the process to, to go through childhood, to go through teenagers' time, and then connect and be successful. There are some, there are many, many great examples of that. And I work closely with juvenile hall students. I work with some continuations classes. And as it was mentioned by council member Cordero, Mike, you know, there's, it has to encompass a big team, you know, from families. How do you support the families? Because it's not just about supporting the kiddos. It's also supporting the families. Do they have a housing? Do they have a job? Do they have a career opportunity? Because also that can help a student to, you know, to find a passion, something they're passionate about, and so they don't fall through the cracks and fall into the hands of these people that are looking up there to take them with you. And that's something I'm passionate about. You know, recreation, that's something I, I enjoy. Open Street is one of the things I enjoy doing. And one of the reasons of Open Street, it was built in Bogota, Colombia. And one of the reasons why that was created is to address the increased crisis of insecurity. And Santa Maria, we can make, working together, that happen. Thank you.
Uh-oh. See Carlos, what happens?
So somebody said, I think it was Mr. Cordero, we can't arrest our way out of this problem, right? When we talk about youth violence, unfortunately, the majority of our youth that is engaged in gangs is youth of color. District One is the district that has the highest amount of youth of color and people of color just in general. So I know that it's a prevalent issue in District One. And it's, it's unfortunate. It's really sad to see, they're kids, right? We, we talk about like, oh, they're like these gang bangers or whatever. At the end of it, they're kids. They're kids that have needs that have not been met, whether it's housing, whether it's education, whether it's attention. I mean, there's a whole array of issues that need to be addressed for our youth to not be inclined to be involved in gangs. I am endorsed by our local unions that have apprenticeship programs. You know, when I graduated in high school, I was told, you need to get out of here, right? There's nothing for you here. There's nothing for the youth. And I think times are changing. And we have to support apprenticeship programs that are alternatives to, you know, the traditional college-bound idea that we all have for success for our youth. There are so many other alternatives that our youth need to see. There are examples of other professionals of color that our youth need to see that have made it. I'm the first in my family to graduate high school, college, and the first lawyer in my family, and it was hard work, you know? It was hard to search for mentors and for people to look up to, but times are changing. You know, the room is filled with young professionals of color, and there's just so much that can be done to support our youth. You know, they're kids. They just need help. They need the resources. And I think that as council, we can make that happen. You know, we can organize these efforts.
So I've, I've said a number of times through this that when I'm looking at addressing a problem, I'm looking at addressing the root of the problem. So when it comes to gang violence in Santa Maria, I take a, I take a holistic approach. I'm looking for the root. So by the time that law enforcement is engaged in the process, there's already a number of systems that have failed these kids. And I want to focus on addressing that aspect of, of their safety. As you've also heard me say a lot this evening, with my background in city planning, I, I'm aware of how the very design of our neighborhoods can make them either a more safe place or a more dangerous place to be. And that's something that would be front of mind when thinking about the future developments of our city. Like has already been said by some other people on this, this panel, when, when our, when our residents, when our youth, when they have resources, they're better off, we're all better off. So we cannot untangle the issue with gang violence from how unaffordable this city has gotten, from how many jobs here do not pay a living wage, how there are not as many opportunities as we need for people of all ages here. And the other thing I want to wrap up with here real quick is that when we address these problems at their root, it is always, always, always less expensive to the city to address that root and not a Band-Aid at the end. Thank you.
Last question, and the hardest one probably. Carlos, I think you'll be the one to answer, or Mike, were you the one? Will you be first this time? Okay. All right. This is the last question, and it's probably the root of, of every of these questions. What experience do you have with large budgets and how will you help add more funds to ours?
Can you hear me? There you go. During the budget, you know, budget process, we knew, and I've said that publicly, openly, we knew that we were going to be in a really tough situation. We knew that, I mean, the end of last year. And since then, I've, so, you know, step back. You're a council member. You're part of five, five people. You don't make decisions. You have to be able to strategize and build and get those at least two votes. Always is, you know, the goal is to get all of you guys together, but at least the three of you, the three. And I've been pushing a lot to look inwards, how this city is using people's money. Because it's not cities' money. It's the Santamarians that pay taxes. And I've been pushing since then for months and months and, okay, we know that we're going to get there. How we can get ready to decrease the impact? How can we look into where we can save some money? What is actually needed and prioritize in regards to that? And, and it was disregard by all council members. And I voted against it because I, that was not the, that was not the idea of how to use people's money. Just, you know, and now they talk about raising taxes. That's what governments do. We spend money, and then when the money ran out, let's put a tax, and let's, everybody chip in. I mean, we're giving developers incentives. Meantime, we're hassling, we're struggling, and that's unfair. And that's come from the people that I've been, I've been talking with for the last couple of years. That's the day-to-day Santa Maria that apparently can make ends meet. How can I support, how can I explain then that these guys that have millions of dollars do not afford? Thank you.
So my experience with budgets, I've had experience in the nonprofit sector, both as a nonprofit staff and also, like I said, as a leader in a nonprofit. When it comes to city budgets, it's a whole different arena. You know, it's like hundreds and hundreds of pages. And in this last city budget vote, I actually read through the budget and, you know, had a bunch of questions. And in the, one of the, the new candidate forums that we had, I also spoke with the head of the finance department. And I was like, you know, this needs more explaining because a lot of the decisions that the council has made is in complete deference to staff interpretation of the numbers, of what these hundreds and hundreds of pages say. As a city council member, I will take accountability and I will make my own conclusions. I won't rely, I won't defer my elected power that I have to city staff, you know? Because when you think about budgets, you know, they say that a budget is a moral compass. It prioritizes the things that are important for a city. And I think our firefighters have a lot to say about Measure U, right? Measure U was a tax, the city promised, the council promised, that it was to fund public safety, which included the firefighters. Look at them now. It's about a year, and they're still not being paid fairly. So when the city looks to its priorities, it has to honor the promises that it's made. And I do think, I also think that we have to, you know, start by not subsidizing for-profit developers, but we also have to look inwards, like Mr. Escorero said, and prioritize the things that we said we were going to prioritize.
All right. So when it comes to the question of like dealing with large budgets, I'll readily admit that it's not something that I deal with in my day job. And I think it's important to recognize one's own limitations when it comes to this work. This isn't something that any one person can do alone. So it'll be my priority to hire independent consultation when it comes to looking at the city budget to make sure that we are getting professional input into these, these very important matters. When it comes to adding funds to the budget, I want to talk real quick about what the budget is mostly made up of. Most of the budget comes from property tax and sales tax. I've been talking a lot this evening about the property tax aspect, the way that our city has built for the past 75 years and how that has, has not been enough to even pay for those developments and maintaining those developments. The other aspect of that that we can control is the sales tax. And so when it comes to increasing sales tax revenue, the thing that I really want to see and the thing that I'll be pushing for is for better support for our small and local businesses. We, we need our small and local businesses to be successful in order to raise revenues. As, as an example, I might run out of time here, but the, a few months, almost a year ago, the city made the decision, the, the planning commission made the decision to okay another Chick-fil-A in Santa Maria at the expense of the space that would have been six to eight small and local businesses.
So for me, the budget is something very personal because I think as city council, we should know what the budget is. There, we need to be really transparent with our constituents and let them know where our budget is, how we're spending our money, understanding where the money comes from and what we're doing with it. I think that's so important as city council, that we're involved with where our money is going. Why are we spending our money over here instead of spending it over here? Safety is a priority for me. And how can we sit here today when we have our amazing firefighters right there in the back that are still without a contract? That's part of our budget. That's something we should be, should, shouldn't even be here today. We shouldn't even be talking about that today. That should have already been resolved. So the budget is huge for any city council because that is something that we need to work for. We're talking about safety in our community. Every time I hear, and I live by the ambulance, every time I hear an ambulance, I think of our firefighters and all that they put on the line for us. And I want to say thank you.
Are we on now? Okay. Thank you very much. The budget. I will admit that that was one of the more difficult things that I had with when I first started. I want to mention the chairs that we sit in. As we sit in these chairs, we actually stand on the shoulders of the many, many people that took those chairs before us. And let me say something about them. I've heard some criticism about them, about how we did this for the last 75 years. Santa Maria, during the worst economic times, the pandemic, that we can all remember, we went through that and never laid a person off because of our budget. We did take a person out that was choosing to leave, and we reclassified a person. I think that's amazing. And we did that with the existing budget that we had. So our budget abilities are much more capable than some people may think they are. And we need to recognize that as an achievement. You know, not laying one single person off. How many people do you know that lost their jobs during the pandemic and we didn't lose a one? I wish that I could speak more about the budget that we have now. We're in litigation, and I've been told that I can't speak to the budget regarding the fire department. But I wish I could, but I can't. So, and, and they know. And I have many contacts on the fire department that I'm still close with, both past and present. So as a first responder, the budget is a concern that I think we are addressing right now.
Thank you. That concludes the portion of our forum from the audience questions. And now we'll close with a two-minute recap from each candidate, beginning with Maria.
So I'm going to stand because I was told people can't see me in the back. In these last two minutes, I want to thank again everybody who came here to listen to us talk today. It is so special for me to be here today, to be here with my family, with my husband. You know, my parents came to this country many, many, many years ago from Sinaloa, and they came with nothing but the desire to thrive, right? And here they are. You know, my brother's here as well. There's a lot that needs to be addressed at the city council, and I can tell you all the skills that I have to address them, but at the core of it, I want you to leave knowing that I'm grounded in this community, that this is my home, that this is where I grew up, and this is where I'm raising my son. And this city is special to me. And I wanted to say it, even if I'm not elected, you know, this November, I'm going to find another creative way to continue doing this work because it's not about the position, right? It's not about the fame and glory and the photos as the flash goes off. You know, it's about doing the work. It's about putting community first. How do we put community first? So I again want to thank you all. And my name is Maria Salguero, and I'm running for Santa Maria City Council District One.
Thank you all for, for being here this evening. I really appreciate you taking the time to come out and get engaged in local politics. I wanted to wrap this up with highlighting a few things I didn't get to talk about earlier. I am a very community-focused candidate. Right now in, in the campaign, you know, that looks like knocking on everybody's doors and listening to people's input. But I want to be clear with you all here now, that doesn't end on Election Day. That will continue. In addition, I plan to hold regular roundtable discussions and meetings and just finding more and more ways to be a proactive, to be proactively accessible to the community. I think it is very important that elected officials make themselves available in this way, and I, I'm embodying that. I also want to leave you with, with one last thought, almost a call to action. I want to ask residents to, to ask for more. The city has been giving us The city has been giving us the bare minimum for far too long. Demand more. Demand that your council members meet you where you're at. Demand that your council member believes in a future for Santa Maria. A better Santa Maria is possible. Should you elect me on November 5th, I will work tirelessly for you and for a better Santa Maria for us all. Thank you all.
I also want to thank everyone for being here, my amazing husband of 47 years. He's such a lucky guy. I have my son that's here. He's assistant warden there at the prison, men's prison, and my daughter-in-law. And I have some pastor friends here that came to support. And I'm just so grateful to be here. I feel very honored to be part of sitting up here with the city council. And I'm just excited about what is happening here in our city. Some good stuff is happening. My whole platform has been, it's time for change. And I truly believe it's time for change in 2024 for Santa Maria. And if elected, I'll work my hardest, the best that I can, to make sure that Santa Maria is a city that is thriving and that it's a safe place for families. We don't want our small businesses to go away. We want to keep them here in Santa Maria, and I'll work hard for that. So I'm so grateful for being here. Thank you for, for coming and hearing all of us, and thank you, my firefighters back there.
Thank you. I want to start out by saying that Santa Maria, I was born and raised in Santa Barbara, but Santa Maria has always been a part of my life. My family members lived in the government housing out on the airport at the back of Walter Park. And we came up often. I didn't know what that meant and had no idea that I would come back here someday to work. The important thing is that we continue to move forward, and we are moving forward. We're moving forward with a number of different projects that are going on. We're bringing housing in. We brought businesses in. Well, I've been on the council. We brought AT Still in. AT Still is the, a college university that is teaching medical field. We involved ourselves more closely with the Hancock College, with the Chamber of Commerce. All of those things are important. That's proven. That, I don't have to, I don't have to ask you to go anywhere to prove that. It's proven right here, right now. I'm, I'm, I'm tested already. My commitment is unwavering. Raised three children here in Santa Maria, local schools. My wife has dedicated her life to education. I've worked with, as a first responder, that has required things that most people cannot really understand. It's not a PSD kind of thing, but the exposure that I've had over my years sometimes causes me to think about, did I do that? And I'm proud of what I did. And I want your vote. I want to come back to the city, and I want to work for you, and I hope that you'll consider just doing that. It's time for us to move on to the next step of where we are here in Santa Maria, and I can take you there. Thank you very much.
Andrew Miller. That was the name of a very good friend of mine, my first best friend in Santa Maria, rest in peace. He was part of a club and part of, and founder, Toastmaster by Santa Maria. And he taught me, he gave me one of the best gifts you can receive from a person. He was this guy that would be up there picking up trash, cleaning this, cleaning that. And he was doing well. You know, he, he would have good, good income, but still, he was up there picking up trash, doing all these sort of volunteer work. And one day I asked him, why do you do that? And he said, Carlos, in Santa Maria, like in life, you first need to invest in the community, and the community will invest back at you. And that changed my perspective of life because, you know, when I got into the candidate race in 2019, I, I showed up to that, to that door for the first time, bringing a lot of experiences, actually helping Santa Maria. And now I wanted to do more and got into politics, but not to be a politician, but a public servant, because I love this community that had welcomed me and my family in such an incredible way. I want to belong to something bigger than myself. And for that, there's no way for me to repay that to this community, to this country. And when I became US citizen, one year before running for office, down there in Santa, in LAX, in LA, sorry, in a convention center, there were like 2,000 people, and the judge asked us one question. You guys already made it, so now you have to make a decision. You can be another one in this country, you know, you're on the other side already, or you can give back to this country that will welcome you. And since then, I registered to vote, and it will be an honor to keep serving Santa Maria as your representative for District One. Thank you.
And that concludes, that concludes our candidate forum for city council. I hope everyone's as inspired as I am with the good quality of people that are willing to serve the community. I hope we've all had a chance to network with one another because there's so much impact we could make if we're all connected, working together. We had a civil discussion. We had disagreements about some of the issues, and yet it was all very civil, and we should be very proud of how we behave in Santa Maria. So go forth and vote November 5th.